Bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you've given us, Lord. We thank you for each person who is here today and for the blessings that you've bestowed on our community. But mostly, Lord, during this Christmas season, we're thankful, Lord, for your Son, Jesus, who gave us a gift to this world. We pray, Lord, for protection, protection for our military, and wisdom, Lord, for our nation, our state, and for us in this city council meeting today. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Montgomery.
Here.
Mr. Larkin.
Here.
Mr. Irwin.
Here.
Mr. Darby.
Here.
Mr. Williams, absent. Mr. Free.
Here.
Mr. Harvey.
Here.
Approve the minutes of November fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen, regular meeting in dispense with the reading.
Second.
Council, please cast your vote. Okay, we have two add-ons.
Two add-ons, but also need...
And then to delete.
That deletion, yes, sir.
We'll handle them each individually, right?
You can delete both completely right now if you want to.
All right, we'll do that if we need a motion.
I'll make a motion, Mr. President, to delete item six and item seven under unfinished business.
Second. Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote. Add-ons number nineteen and twenty.
Add-on number nineteen, adopt a resolution to adjust the salary for the youth recreation supervisor position in Parks and Recreation, first and final reading.
Second.
Questions from the audience?
Council, please cast your vote.
Add-on number twenty would be adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one police communications officer to replace the resignation of a PCO on twelve-one, two thousand and sixteen, first and final reading.
Second. Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote. Need a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Second.
Council, please cast your vote. Mr. Buffington. On our state-of-the-city financial analysis as of October thirty-first.
Right, the report you have before you, counsel, is the October thirty-first. Again, this was scheduled to be done, and I had vacation scheduled, so we pushed it to the report to today. Again, the first pages of the revenues, again, the one thing that really stands out is the Hotel Motel Taxes Fund. And annually, we receive an appropriation from the state, and we received that in October, where historically we received it in November. So the state just gave us our money a little bit early this year. The next two pages are the expenditures or expenses for each department and fund. Again, there are some variances there, and again, those are the same as have been explained before in the water administration and the sewer administration. That's the new, the P-three agreement. Those have not been adjusted into the budget yet. Everything else is, again, the city marshal, we have not received that reimbursement from him that we get annually that was netted out. And again, we have the independent CPA that does their financial at the end of the year to calculate that reimbursement. So that's why they're at a hundred and four percent. Parks and Rec had some unscheduled maintenance, repair and maintenance that pushed them a little bit over their budget year-to-date, but everything should come back into line for the entire year. Any other questions on those? The next page is the sales tax, the comparative report that compares annually, month-to-month, on sales tax collections. As you can see, for the month of October, we were down eleven percent year-over-year. That brings us to three-point-five percent variance year-to-date.
Where do we stand, Joe, relative to our budgeted revenue?
Overall, just in sales tax, we're at about ninety-one percent. So we're down, you know, as far as total sales tax collections on a cash basis, but we still have three months left. We already have preliminary reports for November, and we were up, I think, three-point-two percent.
You mean two months?
Well, technically, we have December.
Oh, you're talking about cash, never mind.
On a cash basis, so. We have preliminary reports on the November collections, which were October sales, and they're showing a three-point-two percent increase year-over-year. So that will...
Right now, we really need to wait and get our November numbers.
November and December numbers are what will really tell. Those, you know, these last four months are really four of the largest, you know, collection months out of the year, so. The Manning Report is the next page, and as you can see, current, we're at six-seventy-three.
Can I stop just one minute?
Sure.
So the December twentieth meeting will have those numbers?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That'll be the November collections, which were actually October sales.
Right.
So we'll have two more months after that that we'll actually report to you guys that will have...
That'll be an important number.
Yes, sir, it will be.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
The Manning Reports, you can see, were down two from last report. Last report, we were at six-seventy-five, currently, we're at six-seventy-three. And the remaining pages, the three legal link pages, are the detailed analysis for the water and sewer funds.
Which, at the next meeting for the council and the public, we were going to have a workshop December twentieth at two o'clock. I believe Phyllis has given public notification, but it's going to be very important from a standpoint of to how our P-three is working and the savings to the citizens of Bossier City. So, and so far, it all indicates that it's going better than expected.
That's correct.
So, anyway, another important group of reports that we anticipate looking very well, so, thank you. Unfinished business.
Adopted...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Before we do that, since we have the students who are here, and we're glad to see you all, could you maybe just give them a brief on what is about to happen now on this meeting?
Sure.
Since this is not an agenda meeting, I thought that would be good for them to know that.
Absolutely. What we have is two sets of ordinances. I'm trying to think how I could explain this simply, but an ordinance to be passed in the city of Bossier has to have two votes. And so those votes occur today on new business, and then unfinished business is the second vote, which is two weeks later. Does that make sense? Great, that's what I wanted. Y'all like to come up before here, and we welcome any other questions, but that's what we're doing here. This is unfinished business, which is the second vote of how we're going to spend our money and allocate it to what projects and what needs to be done to keep the city of Bossier running.
And it takes four votes for anything to pass. So four people has to vote in affirmative, and it will pass. See, look on the board over there, it'll show who voted.
And we have one absent, which is very important, because a three-to-two vote does not pass, or it'll take a four-to-two vote. A three-to-three would be a tie, and that ordinance would die. So, very important that it takes four votes out of the seven, which is a simple majority.
And Mr. Wa...
And that's according to our charter, by the way, I'm sorry.
And Mr. Walker, your great mayor here, he doesn't have a vote, but he has a voice.
Hello out there, TV man.
But we welcome the mayor at our meeting every week, so...
And on this end, we should say, also point out, our legal representative, Mr. Hall, is on this end of the podium, so he keeps us in line as well.
So we've got powerful people flanking us on the left and the right, so. And Ms. Phyllis.
Our clerk, yes.
Our city clerk, she handles all of our business and keeps us in line and keeps us straight and going in the right direction. Is there anybody else? I think that pretty well sums it up. These are our department heads, which operate under the mayor's guidance, and I'd put them up against anybody in the United States of America when it comes to running government. So we appreciate everything that y'all do as well, and the mayor. Good summary?
Good job.
And by the way, we've got a new Christmas tree out there. I want y'all to notice that, it's LSU Tiger, so. Go Tigers in the citrus bowl. I think we've covered pretty much everything, so we'll go on to unfinished business now.
Adopt an ordinance to adopt the Hotel Motel Taxes Fund budget for two thousand and seventeen.
Second.
Third.
All right. Any questions from the council? Any questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote. Motion passes.
Adopted ordinance approving the acquisition of the property described as four-oh-nine Arcadia Street, authorizing the mayor to sign any and all documents necessary to acquire property for property acquisition in the old downtown area of Bossier City for the Bossier Re-Envisioning Project, final reading.
Second.
Questions from the audience?
Council, please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance to appropriate two-hundred thousand dollars to come from the Sales Tax Capital Improvement Fund to be used to replace failed storm sewer culvert running along the rear property line of twenty-six-hundred block of Bardo Lane, final reading.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance to appropriate a hundred and ninety thousand dollars to come from the Sales Tax Capital Improvement Fund to be used to design and construct traffic signals for the Stockwell Road-Shed Road intersection, final reading.
Second. Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance to appropriate a hundred and ninety thousand dollars to come from the Sales Tax Capital Improvement Fund to be used to design and construct traffic signals for the Hickory Ridge Road-Shed Road intersection, final reading.
Second. Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
New business, witness opening of sealed bids for Big Airlines Sewer Lift Station.
Counsel, the engineer's estimate on this was almost four-point-nine million, four million eight-hundred sixty-nine thousand. There were two addenda that were sent out, and again, it was just clarification of contract and bid documents. There was nothing material in those addenda. In the funding source for this, just for informational purposes, was the new DEQ loan, the most recent DEQ, and the budgeted amount was five million. We received one bid. The bid was from Max Foot Construction Company, LLC. They received both the addenda. The bid bond is attached. The bid is for four million eight-hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars even. Ask that you approve the reading of the bid.
Second. All right. Council, please cast your vote.
Hearing to review the recommendation of demolition and removal of a dilapidated structure located at the following legal address, seven-oh-one Leon Street, Bossier City, Louisiana.
Good afternoon, counsel. This is seven-oh-one Leon. It was condemned back in July the eighth of two thousand and sixteen with a notice to repair or demolish the structure, and they failed to do so. No permits were ever obtained, and it still remains in violation of the code. And we have the mayor's approval to proceed and appointment of Robin Harville to represent the owners.
We did contact the owner of record, Mr. Madison Pierce. Spoke with Mr. Pierce. He is aware of today's proceedings. He indicated to share his statements to the council that he does not have wherewithal to address the concerns, and he does not oppose the city's demolition of the improvements.
Thank you. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to demo this property?
Second.
Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Hearing to review the recommendation of demolition and removal of the dilapidated structure located at the following legal address, one-one-eight Colquitt Street, Bossier City, Louisiana.
Mayor, counsel, we sent the letter for the demolition stuff on one-eighteen Colquitt and stuff in July, came back unclaimed. We did the common donation letter. We appointed Ms. Harville to represent the owners.
We made every effort to contact Mr. Henry Franklin and Ms. Kazu Andrews, who are the owners of the property. We have had absolutely no response to our numerous efforts to provide notice to these individuals. The property has been vacated and is not occupied, and as I said, we've had no response to our various notice efforts.
Make the motion, we demolish.
Second. Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Adopt a zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC, petitioner blocker builders, location forty-seven-oh-five Lily Street, Bossier City, Louisiana, request rezone from RA Residential Agriculture to B-one business commercial office for office space for general contracting business.
Sam, have you had any opposition?
No, there was no opposition to this. These are four large agricultural lots that front Lily Street. This is the second of the four to request commercial zoning. The other lot that has been zoned commercial has been that way for many, many years, has not caused many issues on the street. It received a favorable recommendation with no opposition.
It's a nicely built.
Yes, it is. Very contemporary-looking.
So I move. Second. Any questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Adopt zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC, petitioner new beginnings Christian Fellowship, location forty-one-eight-seven Viking Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana, request rezone from I-one light industrial to B-three general business for a proposed worship center.
Second.
This is the area of Viking Drive, and it is zoned light industrial. Also, the reason for the zoning changes is our current ordinances don't allow for churches as a use in a light industrial area like they are in many communities. So it has to be changed to be three. That area is a mixture of commercial and industrial uses there along Viking Drive. It's not out of place, being B-three in that industrial area. There was no opposition to this case either.
Any other questions? Need a motion?
Already have a motion and a second.
Oh, you did? Lost my train of thought. Questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Adopt a zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC, petitioner Weijia Shihada, location lots thirty-nine and lots one through six of Airline Park Estates, Bossier City, request rezone from RLD Residential Low Density to B-one business office.
This one was a little more difficult than the three. Originally came to the board as a B-two zoning, but without a use that was definitely requiring a B-two. Received considerable opposition from the surrounding property owners and the zoning board, who weren't comfortable with the B-two. The owner agreed to reduce that zoning classification to B-one, and it received a favorable recommendation from the board, and not as much opposition from the surrounding owners for a B-one. There are some of the owners in the subdivisions, residences there, that are interested in marketing their houses for office building, their fronting airline drive.
Sam, the property behind five and six, lots forty-three and forty-four, which are not addressed in this ordinance, they're going to be addressed later. Are they still looking at those going B-two, or are they going to seek B-one for those?
If they find a tenant that would need a B-two, I would expect they will apply for a B-two zoning. This is an odd situation. Subdivision's been platted since the fifties, early sixties, and only developed fourteen houses in it. I guess in a perfect world, all those homes could be purchased if the owners were willing to sell and at the prices everybody could agree to, and the whole development become commercial, but that's not what we have to work with at this time. More than years, as we got more in tune with base realignment and closings, hearings for Barksdale and other bases around the country, this area's been a fairly high decibel zone. Be kind of difficult to get a R-one zoning in there now because of a much more strict way we look at those decibel zones to protect the base.
Are there residences on one and two, those lots?
No, sir, it's three and four to the south, I believe, is where the actual residences are. Two of the lots one and two are vacant, Drexel Land.
You have to come to the mic, please.
If you could state your name and address, please, sir, for the record.
Shaun Dial, twenty-eighty Highway, one-sixty-two, Benton, Louisiana, the consultant for Mr. Roger Shihada. And just out of, to be clear, lots seven and eight would be the vacant lots, and lot one, two, three, and four have residents, and five and six do not, I'm sorry.
That's fine. Harder and harder to do this by memory without a map.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any other questions?
On the unresolved issues, are those pending resolving?
Any commercial development, if the property is approved for rezoning, any commercial development will have to meet compatibility buffer requirements, fencing and all that by code. As of right now, there was no particular use, so it was not shown on any plan, but they will have to meet all that fencing requirements, buffering landscaping requirements, and it will have become same commercial codes and zoning codes as a commercial building would.
On here, it says something about drainage plan. Is that the right one? Am I looking at the right one?
Nothing about the drainage came up at our hearings that I recall. They didn't, they probably didn't submit a drainage plan because it was existing homes and they're drained now. It's, drainage plans are usually required when there's an actual building going to be built, so that we know how the water's going to drain from that new construction.
Okay. Mayor?
I'd just like to comment also that encroachments on the base is really important thing when you get around to base realignment and closure, so to the extent we could keep additional residential development in that area would be desirable from an encroachment standpoint.
Thank you. So, Sam, you said that they've agreed to be one?
Sir?
They've agreed to go to B-one? Is that right?
Pretty much.
Because it doesn't still say B-two on the...
On the application. The application originally came in as B-two. It was amended with the owner's permission to be one at the hearing itself.
But it's not in our...
We don't require a new application. It's in your ordinance before you to be B-one.
Oh, right, okay.
Sam, what do, I know there's not going to be any more curb cuts. What are they going to do for access to those pieces of property?
My knowledge, and Shaun, correct me if I'm wrong, there will be one access in there, and then a service road will be constructed in an existing fifty-foot right-of-way that runs adjacent to and parallel to Airline Drive.
Do I need to read? Okay. So just, Mr. Olie, I believe I'm saying his name correctly, Department of Transportation, has clarified that it would be his preference that we currently have a curb cut on lot one, and there's a curb cut on lot four. We would actually abandon lot four's curb cut. We would have a curb cut from Chantel that will intersect to Val three, and then Val three will have a curb cut that will exit. So we would have a single curb cut from lot one that will come to this intersection, and then again, all the way to here. Mr. Brubaker has also shown interest. He owns an eleven-acre tract here, and so he will be left with a responsibility. He is showing interest in coming with B-one as well. Initially, he was opposed to the B-two, but now that it's being approved, he, or the concept of it being approved, he's ready to jump back on board, so. So in terms of the lots affected, then we would have, again, from Chantel, we would abandon lot four's access, and again, utilizing lot one's access, and this is still something to come to you guys at a later date.
What will be the divider between those lots along Airline Drive and the property residential? What type of wall or divider are you going to have there?
We would, of course, abide by the minimal requirements that are before by the city, but we've been talking brick. Most everything's been masonry, and we would do either a cinder block or a six-foot of our preference, and if it needed to be to eight or seven, we would be our client. Now, just to be clear, my client, Mr. Shihada, is the owner of five and six and lots one, two, three, and four, as individual residents having piggybacked our application. And there'll be three standing standalone residents that would have to comply with a conjoined site plan to be, again, presented to you guys before we can really effectively sell these properties.
And I see the reconfiguration of the, of the streets and the four cul-de-sacs. What are you going to have as far as an entrance? Is there going to be any, anything to delineate that you're entering a residential area along the street?
So there are phases to this that we would like to get to. Again, five and six are the first phase for my client. He owns, owns the rest of the properties that are outlined in orange here, and so we have proposed to the residents a more long-term plan that would retain a residential portfolio and then add a commercial portfolio, but we would have to have the consensus of these three lots, or actually, these five lots. This is still something that we do not want to force the conversation of. If we have to abandon this approach, we'll do so. We'll sidebar that to a later date when we can get more in agreeance into how it should be, but if we are to proceed with this plan, again, it would require these folks to be on board, and we would propose that inclusive to Mr. Shihada's commitments to the resident, a fully development out of this section residentially, infrastructure of this cul-de-sac, these cul-de-sacs, and then we would do a gated entrance here, not just a sign, but a gated secured entrance, as a cost to Mr. Shihada for the development phase. But again, that's a proposed concept. We've not committed to that, and we probably would need to have other commitments before we would make that settlement, and come back before you guys with that proceed.
How many residents do you have in there?
There are a total of, let me just make sure, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen residents that are about there. One that does not, this is actually a rented house now, and then each of the ones across the front are more than willing to move. They have those desires to have a lease. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, that are residents that once we complete, we'll proceed.
More often than not, when those residential homes like that are rezoned and then purchased as a office, they remodel the interior of the residence to commercial code requirements, and it remains residential in style on the outside. You see that on Old Madden Road and Airline Drive, all the various houses that have become commercial on Airline to the south.
Mr. Shihada is not buying those four lots. There's not a proposal for him to buy those four lots. They will individually sell those lots.
I'm so sorry. Thank you, I'll try to stand in front of that mic. But Mr. Shihada has not...
But Mr. Shahada has not offered any money for lots four, three, two, and one. Those residents have shown the interest to remain there as long as they would like to. I think Ms. Woodard has shown the most interest in moving sooner than later, which would be lot three. The others are planning to stay there as long as they can and then allow the B one classification to benefit them from a residential evaluation for their property values, or a commercial property values.
Any other?
I think that's all I have. Other than we do have, I think, Ms. Lucky in the audience, I'd like to hear what she has to say.
All right, let's make sure we've got, when they're done, yeah, all the questions answered up here.
Sam, I was just looking at the ordinance. You said the ordinance has been changed to be one, but the application still had been to...
But it's on your agenda as B one.
It's on the, yeah, the descriptions be one, but the ordinance itself still says B two that I have in the system.
Ellis, can you?
I submitted to you guys what I received, the paperwork. The letter to the mayor states B one, but the actual ordinance does state B two that I received.
So is that new?
It said B one.
So now do we have to start bringing this back again, Mr. Hall?
It's amended to, to the ordinance to read B one.
So when do we amend it? Right now? I'll make that motion. Need a second?
Second.
Any questions from the audience that we're amending this from B two to B one? Counsel, please cast your vote. All right. Any further discussion from the council? All right. Mr. Harb?
I never got a motion to begin with on that, on that first item. So before y'all can vote again, I need a motion and a second.
On what? So moved.
The very beginning, before the discussion ever started, I never received a motion on that.
Oh, we didn't get...
We need a motion and a second to...
I'll make a motion to introduce the...
Adopt as amended. I need a motion to adopt as amended.
Do we need that motion?
To follow up on the, what we just amended.
Yes, sir.
So...
Okay. I'll make a motion to adopt as amended.
Second.
Now we can continue our discussion, correct?
Yes, sir. Sorry.
This has been a difficult one.
It has, Sam. We're going to need to sit down and talk for a while.
It's been very emotional.
Ms. Lucky, I believe, is in the audience. Could you state your name and address, please, for the record?
Yes, hi. My name is Mary Lucky, and my address is two seven one seven Chantel Drive.
Okay.
Could I ask you which, I'm looking to think, has a lot number on it. Do you know which lot number you are?
I'm sorry, I've forgotten. We are the house, the third house on the left on Chantel, almost in front of the lots forty-three and forty-four.
Tim.
Third house on the left, okay.
Tim.
Oh, thanks. Good. Thank you very much. Got it. Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Go ahead.
Did you have any questions for me in particular? I can tell you that the majority of the remaining residents of our community are finally in support of the residents on Airline Drive. We're not going to hinder them from doing what is in their best interest. So we have finally come together and agreed that B one would be okay to just kind of support everybody.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
So you're speaking in support of this?
Well, I'm speaking not in opposition. I'm not going to say that we're one hundred percent supporting it, but we're not going to oppose it because it is in the best interest of, of the, of the Airline Drive residents, and it actually makes sense, you know, for their best interest. And with a B one zoning, that seems to be fair enough for everybody. There are some residents who are concerned about the drainage, though. Those ones in particular behind the Airline Drive homes. I believe Mr. Miller may have voiced some concerns in a past meeting about that. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
And we've addressed Mr. Miller's...
That's what I was fixing. Sam, could you go, you explained earlier that they would come with their drainage once they filed for the building permit?
We would have required a drainage plan to show the board if they'd had buildings and we knew what exactly they were going to do them. But at time of building permitting for any, the conversion of the existing homes to commercial or any new construction would have to be approved by the city engineer's office, and drainage would be checked at that time.
Okay. Mark, would you mind providing a little backup here on how that process works to let these residents know?
As plans are brought in for permitting, I check, I check drainage on a case-by-case basis as well as ensure water and sewer services available.
And with, I'm sorry, within the past month, we had the ditches cleaned out along, well, in front of Mr. Miller's and Mrs. Rance's, lots forty and forty-one. We had those, those ditches cleaned out to provide better drainage because Mr. Miller's property, the water comes close to the house just in a normal rain. So that's, that part of this concern has been addressed.
But this is in the city limits?
Yes.
So, Mark, to my point, you may, I mean, as best you can as far as a watershed and so forth, study that everything, there's the capacity to handle new construction without potential, you know...
We're going to make...
Adversarial effects of flooding on the rest that's there.
We're going to make sure that all of our rules and regulations are complied with, and that, I believe this is in a flood zone, and that all buildings will be one foot above the one-hundred-year flood line.
All right. So any new building that they do in these lots that already have houses existing, if they don't build a new building in, say, in Ms. Woodard's lot, lot three, and they just re-hab her house, nothing's going to be built up there.
No, nothing would be built up.
But if they tore down the house next to her, would that property then be built up above the flood zone?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
There was also some concern mentioned regarding the traffic coming through the neighborhood, and I think they mentioned something about having a separate access site for construction so the large trucks wouldn't be coming around our neighborhood. We were wondering if it would be possible to, you know, minimize that as much as possible to minimize the stress and everything for the, for us, even maybe putting up some of those, I don't know what you call it, those pipes that, you know, where people cannot drive through the neighborhood, the trucks in particular, the construction equipment and trucks and employees and whatnot. We're concerned about massive amount of traffic coming through.
Who would handle that, Mark, as far as load limit and so forth? Is that what you're speaking to on the roads?
Yes, that as well as just the increase in traffic.
You know, we have that, don't we, in, in the city load limits on certain roads and...
We do. I don't think it'd be, at least, not at this time, is it applicable to this neighborhood. Big construction projects, we always look for a construction entrance to keep heavy traffic off of our city streets, and we would do that in this case, too.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you very much. Right. Thanks very much.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Lucky. Is there anyone else from the audience that would like to speak regarding this issue? Counsel, please cast your vote. Thank you, Sam.
Introduce an ordinance to rehabilitate the A and P Sewer List Station. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
We lost our younger audience.
They had to go to work and activities.
Okay. Well, that's okay. That's a good thing. Questions from the audience?
Did we miss something, Sam?
I thought that's what we just read.
Introduce an ordinance to rehabilitate the A and P Sewer List Station. Does your number seven still say something different?
Number, conduct a chlorine flush.
That one was deleted from the agenda.
It's just on my hard copy.
Oh, okay.
Okay. I got you.
All right. Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to amend emergency ordinance sixty-three of twenty sixteen along with the final change order for big airline gravity main replacement. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt an emergency ordinance affecting the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Bossier City, authorizing the immediate promotion of an assistant chief of EMS and promotion to EMS supervisor. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to execute the attached contract for professional services with Ginger Adam Corley LLC for twenty seventeen. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance authorize the attached list of fire department equipment to be declared surplus to the needs of the Bossier City Fire Department and to be donated to First Bossier, to be delivered to Juarez, Mexico as part of a mission trip. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Counsel, this is, I introduce you to Pastor Brad Jerkovich and let him tell you a little bit about it. If y'all have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them for you.
All right. Thanks, Chiefs of Gun. Good afternoon, counsel. Forgive my voice, been battling a cold all week. But we have for years taken a trip, team members, about twenty-five or thirty, down to Juarez, Mexico, delivering Operation Crystal Child Shoe Boxes. Been an unbelievable ministry. They, I think out of that organization alone, they distribute about seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand of those boxes, those kids, all over the country. But in Juarez, a unique opportunity to bless that community, build some goodwill, is through taking these kinds of resources to that community and that city and that leadership. And they have, they have just been overwhelmed by that kind of generosity. And so to have that opportunity to take these resources again this year in January with Chiefs of Gun would be quite a privilege. Be a great testimony for our city, and it's a, it's a fun way to bless a community. And appreciate y'all's willingness to look at that.
I might also point out, to have you chief point out, that this is not, this is service life on this is expired. We cannot use this, so we're not giving away serviceable equipment, but they don't have the same restrictions that we do, so...
Correct. That's right.
That's exactly right. That bunker gear has a ten-year shelf life, and it's past its ten years. So we cannot use it or give it to any fire department in the United States at all. We would have to destroy it.
Are you making that trip to teach them how to do that?
I am, you and I.
He, he sure made that he's afraid to fly, so I don't know what all that's about, but...
I'm just afraid to eat over there.
Go drink the water.
It could be an adventure.
Council member to attend as well, just to make sure that it's implemented correctly.
It sounds like a plan.
I'd love to have you sit between us. That'd be great.
I'm good.
Any other questions in the council? Pastor and chief, thank y'all for all you do in bringing the good to other people in other parts of the world.
You bet.
We thank you for your service.
It's a joy to be in this community. You guys are awesome.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all. Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution to hire or promote one utility worker at the water treatment plant to replace a vacant position in public utilities. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution to hire or promote one wastewater plant operator to replace a vacant position in public utilities. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the replacement of one civic center event coordinator position. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of two replacement police officers to replace resignations from the department. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution adopting City of Bossier City's current investment policy. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution adopting questionnaire from legislative auditor and the city's answer there, too. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Joe, do you want to talk about this, since we're going too fast, or... Actually, I was kidding, but...
It was sliding while I was... If you have any questions, I'll...
Did I ask the audience?
No.
Don't think so.
Questions from the audience? If y'all want to know about this letter? All right. Counsel, please cast your vote.
Approve report of final change order for FEMA DR four-two-two-eight PW number eighty-three and number eighty-eight, an increase of forty thousand, four-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars and thirty-eight cents. Total cost of contract with increase, one-hundred-and-ninety thousand, eighty-eight dollars and thirty-eight cents.
So moved.
Second. Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution to adjust the salary for the youth recreation supervisor, supervisor position in Parks and Recreation. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Coach?
I was just going to let y'all know, Coach, Mr. Williams and I talked to Coach about this. It's just a realignment of taking money from one position and putting it to another position. So from revenue and expense size, it's, side, it's neutral to his budget. But I'll let him explain.
The gentleman is getting the increase in salaries, our director of the youth sports. He's grown our programs from, our first soccer season, four-hundred-and-fifty kids participating. Last spring, we had over thirteen-hundred. He has to build the teams, organize, the schedule, and so forth. Now we spilled over from the soccer fields, using all that onto the football fields in the spring to have our games played and so forth. Football has increased. Our numbers are up to around a thousand in football players this past fall. We had more soccer players this fall than we've had football players for the first time. And it's all due to this gentleman's leadership in the youth programs, organizing and accommodating the coaches. Some people coach two teams. They have to have their schedule worked out where they're able to, you know, be here. Then they gotta move around, go to another location, and he's very accommodating, done an excellent job, and I like to do everything possible to keep him with us here at the city. Any questions?
Coach, I'm concerned about that, when we cut the salary on the other supervisor, supervising position. Is there anybody in that position at the moment?
No, sir. It's a vacant position.
What's the salary right now for that position that's vacant?
The vacant position now is thirty-nine thousand.
So it'll go down to thirty-six?
Yes, sir.
And you think you'll be able to bring somebody in as a supervisor at thirty-six?
Yes, sir. That individual will be over the centers such as Hoover Park, Mitchell, and so forth, along with their assisting the youth gentleman. But the big thing that he handles is the scheduling of all the field rentals. Like, the gentleman who was in that capacity has left, and... left, and 2017 calendar is already full for weekend tournaments in on our facilities, and this would be his main focus of generating the coverage of that, such as the people that will be working, the Bossier City employee working at rental tournaments and so forth.
What is his current salary? The person that's going to get the increase?
The person getting the increase now, I believe, is 42,000.
So he's going to go to 47? 45, 46?
45.
Yeah, sir.
Any other questions from the council? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote. Thank you, Coach.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one police communications officer to replace a resignation of a PCO on 12/1/2016, first and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote. Any other business to come before the council today? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't catch you quick enough.
Everybody go vote Saturday.
Oh, that's right. Very important election, so everybody please vote. Thank you, Mayor. Leading adjourned.